Pardons to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
See all of you. Hate to remind you, but today is the last official day of summer. It's a nice day, but it's gonna be a nice fall. But we're starting off with a nice fall. You open it up. We will call the meeting in order. Look for a motion of agenda approval.
I need to make an amendment.
Okay.
Under the things for the bond agreement, we're gonna leave it there, but it's just gonna be discussion. You won't be approving it today.
On the last item?
Yeah.
No approval?
No approval.
Okay, no approval.
And Mike will be joining us. Mike?
Okay.
From Davidson Company.
Anything else?
That's it, as far as I know.
I'd make that motion with the amended agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Minutes from the nine fourteen meeting?
I kind of looked through the minutes, and I believe they're all correct.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, minutes approved. Do we have any general public concerns? All right, seeing and hearing none, we will move on to Becky Struthers, City of Bode, for the tax parcel abatements.
Yes, we acquired two properties in Bode through a useful sub-adventure, took about two years. But anyway, we, on the five oh one First Street in a split of T N S, there is a taxes due of, that one is what, one eighty-eight?
Current year, and then some diluent tax was anticipated, so just to make sure they're off.
And then do I also ask that you turn around, this property we actually have torn down, and right now we're just moving it, whether we sell it? I don't have any direction from my counsel at this point.
Our practice hasn't been of any future, was we just asked that you submit a letter if another year's come out to request that abatement.
Okay, okay, current year. So right now I need to ask the one eighty-eight, Jenna, that's right, on the five oh one First Street?
I would go with the, just say current year and prior year, to show that.
Current year and prior year.
Say you had something.
For clarification for the minutes, which parcel number is that?
This parcel number is...
Just the last four would be fine.
Two zero zero four.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's a bare lot then.
Right now, that's a bare lot, yes. We have torn down that house.
They're both together, what's the amount, three oh, zero one?
No, that's a different parcel.
That's a different parcel, okay. And they're both in here together, that's what I was wondering. I'll make the motion to abate the taxes on parcel two zero zero four.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on that one?
Clarification again, that's an amount of a hundred ninety-eight dollars?
Current year plus two-year diluent taxes, two oh eight each. Since, like she said, it's taken them a couple of years.
So one ninety-eight, two oh eight, and two oh eight?
Yes.
Okay.
Plus penalty.
Okay. At first and second, any further discussion? Endor clarification? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that one passes. Then we have to discuss the other parcel.
Yes, I have another parcel, and Peggy, that one is the three zero zero one.
Okay, thank you.
And this property, we have sold. There was a mobile home on it, so we sold it as is. And right now our attorney is working on the quitclaim deed to get it transferred. So I'm not sure how to do that one, Jenna, so.
I didn't even get it from a loan.
Okay. We have sold that property just like a week and a half ago.
So did you, got a question. Did you own the mobile home too, or just the land?
We, just the land. We had to sell it as is because we have some...
Okay, this is, this is just the land, okay. Is there, I didn't do that, John, for mobile homes. Is there even property?
Yeah, they have to go through a court, district court, and then the court will tell us that we can abate the taxes in that case, once that, because it's a building on land.
Yeah.
For some reason, they put them in different names. I have no clue why that happened.
Okay.
Crazy.
All right.
Like, one, there's two owners that live there, and one put the land in their name, and the other one put the mobile home in their name.
But we were advised by our attorney to sell it as is with the mobile home on it.
Okay.
And then the new owners taking the risk.
Let them take the responsibility of getting that cleaned up. It's good, it's good thought.
What's the cost on that one then?
That one is ninety dollars, Jenna, so.
That's all I would, that's the call there for current year taxes.
Nothing diluent?
Yes.
That's, there's nothing prior?
Nope. We had taken care of those when they got the tax sale deed. This one's been faster than the other parcels.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to accept three zero zero one for ninety-eight even?
Ninety.
Ninety.
Ninety?
Yep.
Ninety's better than ninety-eight.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Knowing as I say, we like to work with these cities to get these properties cleaned up, help the towns out.
Well, that's, thank you, I mean, we appreciate it. It's costly to get these properties.
It is, very costly for the cities, and it helps to get these places tore down or cleaned up, or whatever you gotta do to avoid problems. All right, for a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, three zero zero one passes. Do you have anything else?
That's all I have. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Jenna, and speaking of Jenna, now you can... There's lots of others.
Today. I have, City of Livermore sent a request for two parcels of one ownership property that they got obtained in a tax sale deed transfer, and we're looking to abate the current year taxes of parcel ending in eight oh oh six has a hundred ninety dollars plus penalties, and eight oh seven is eighteen dollars. And what, can't put them in a letter?
All right, I'll make the motion to abate the taxes on eight oh oh seven and eight oh oh six for those amounts. Any further discussion? Endor clarification? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes?
The next one on this agenda is a parcel that the county obtained from Cornbelt in Beaver Township. So it was taxable when the county acquired it, and now it will be exempt, but there's forty-six dollars of taxes on that parcel that I wanted to have.
What is this parcel? Is it, is it the trail, part of the trail system down there?
Has been to and...
Or is it the road?
That's what I thought, the road.
Yeah, the road.
Road, okay. I know is, there's always been all kinds of debate on maintaining that road.
That's from the top of the hill.
Down to the trail.
Trail through.
To get access to the trail.
It's left, the past year, uh, transferred to the county.
Okay.
The tax was, for that, forty-six dollars can be paid.
I'll make the motion to abate the taxes on zero 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 six.
That was forty-six?
Yep.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
My next item was the, was the request for a Title nineteen tax abatement for two parcels in Livermore that individual qualifies for those.
Okay.
Based on the paperwork that we received from them, and just a matter of, the taxes aren't forgiven, they're just suspended and held, not due with no penalties accumulating, as long as this individual qualifies.
Dumb question. I always, I got a question. So when the property maybe is sold someday, is those taxes due on the same?
Yes, they are due. All of the back taxes are due before the next semi-annual payment period, and if not, then the penalty is approved.
All right.
So you said the pay-to-work was in order, and do they have to continue to put that in every year through hours of long?
Yep.
And that's your nightmare?
Yeah.
Are you keeping track of the, I mean, I'm assuming it's...
Well, they send us the people that qualify, but then we gotta try to get ahold of somebody. I think I go through two city now. I couldn't even find anybody in Fort Dodge to help me.
Well, I'm sure it's just trying to keep track of those and be...
The only one we have right at the moment, so it's not...
I would make the motion to suspend those taxes on the parcel zero zero five and zero zero four in the City of Livermore.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved?
Was Brackey coming in or not?
No, she wasn't coming in.
So at the bottom there, if I could while I'm here, ask for the abatement of taxes on those two parcels, eight oh, eight eleven, eight zero eleven, eight oh twelve, that City of Brackey acquired in a tax sale deed, and have a current year taxes. One parcel of eight dollars, the other one is two dollars.
I'll make that motion to accept the abatement.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Gary?
Thank you.
So we got all the tax abatement wrapped up for...
As far as I know, bro.
Thank you. All righty then. Uh, don't mind going. We would go if I consider.
Yeah.
There's no reason to go a minute or two too long on three forty-five?
I don't know why you'd give it away.
So, uh, we're just a minute or two ahead of time, which is nice for change. Uh, we need to discuss the approval letter of application for Rolling Hills Community Services.
Okay, well, as you all know, I printed a map for everybody for our mental health C S region. So you can see where everything, all counties are. Saragordo, in their last week's supervisors meeting, approved to send their letter of application to C I C S, which is in the green down below. And so what that, what that does is, there's a law that, for the contiguous rule, you have to be adjoined to your region. So as you can see, since Saragordo leaves, that work, what they call orphans, orphans, the rest of us to the west, the ones in blue. Emmett doesn't really count right now. They have two years to kind of decide what they want to do because, and that's because the Cassup, when it may go and work, they chose to leave, and they'll be gone this, or they are gone, this July they were gone. I got it right, yeah. We have had several meetings, and my, I should just clarify. When I say we, it's been Clarence Spector out of Pocahontas and Carl Hugavell out of Wright. Because needless to say, Humboldt is right in the middle of those two, so it depends upon what those two counties do, is dependent upon what Humboldt can do. I, last month, participated in C I C S's meeting, their, their monthly meeting. I was not able to participate in Rolling Hills' last month's meeting, but Clarence did. And then we also had a Zoom meeting with Don Menster, who is the CEO of Rolling Hills, on, can't remember now if it was one zero, three, C S, well, either, but anyway. And three of their CEOs of the supervising governing board. And they are, they're, see, for the most part, I think most of them are willing to accept us in. Of course, it has to go through their, their boards, and they have to talk about it and everything. But as far as services go, they're fairly close to what we have for services. C S S has always been a trailblazer for services, so with us, so there's gonna be a deficit of some services. There's no doubt about that. But I'm sure we can find other avenues to be able to help these people. We're very open to making sure that everybody is taken care of. We're not gonna, we just gotta, so if we want to, a lot of the services are either in Sack County or Woodbury, I think I've got that correct, for what we would be using. But we can also have contracts with C F R and Berry Hill out of Webster. So there, there's not, we won't be losing providers. And all the regions use each other's services. They just create contracts, and so then they would just charge the region, and then the region would pay them.
Okay, got some questions?
Okay, fire away.
What is Webster thinking about doing, just a second?
Webster and Saragordo have sent in their letter of application to C I C S. Yeah, they're the ones that started.
Started the problem.
Started, yep.
Okay. Now, when you look at the population base of these regions, Rolling Hills is two hundred thousand roughly. We're leaving one that's four hundred thousand. So your administrative cost is basically gonna double?
Possibly. They, they have one CEO, and just like what C S S has. They also, what they do is, C S S had the, you know, we just recently approved to go to the one employer, so they're not county employees anymore. They are the only region that does that. So no matter what region we go with, we will then go back to county of record for employment. So from what I understand, and you might have to help me on this part, Allison, because I want to make sure that we would have a care coordinator and then a service coordinator? Do I have that right?
Well, it depends on how, on how you frame it, so the care coordinator and the hospital support staff, and maybe additional service coordinator in that region.
And Kathy is our mental health advocate. So Kathy is shared by Wright, Webster, and Humboldt, is that correct?
Pocahontas.
And Pocahontas, oh, and Pocahontas, I'm sorry, okay. So before we went into regions, Pocahontas and Humboldt were together, kind of as a group. I, I personally feel that Rolling Hills would, the reason why I kind of like the Rolling Hills, they all seem to get along very well. They're about the same size counties that we are. So I think that part of it would be a benefit to us too, because we all have kind of, we're rural. I mean, let's just face it, we're a rural area, and we know what the rural problems are. Any other questions?
How does it affect you, Kathy, because if that would be limiting you going, helping with other counties?
Yeah, we really probably don't have any idea, because of, you know, whatever those individual counties would decide to do. Because I believe that Wright County has on their agenda to go with C I C S.
C I C S, yes.
So Wright County is, yeah, choosing to go that way, so.
So basically, it's happened now.
It's shared between two regions. I do know I did speak with the mental health advocate that works in both, I don't know about C I C S's region, but I do know in Rolling Hills, and they're not interested in taking on any additional counties, so I know all issues have Humboldt and Pocahontas. I don't know about the other regions for that, what they'd be doing. When does the decision have to be made, Randy?
We have to get the letter of approval over and then get accepted into their region. And then we have to go to C I C S and then, you know, let them know that we're gonna be leaving on November, by November fifteenth. It has to be on their, their meeting agenda to be approved to do this also. The reason, one of the reasons why, the law states that we have until February twenty fifteen, but if we don't have something in place, DHS would... Pardon?
Twenty what?
February, I'm sorry. Did I really? Oh, my God, I'm aware of that. Thank you, thank you, Bruce. I think my mind is...
That's what I heard too.
Okay, twenty twenty-one. I got the fifteen in my head from November, but anyway, February fifteenth of twenty twenty-one. Sorry.
That's right.
And I don't want to be at the mercy of DHS, because I don't know where they would...
Who'd send us?
Right. And that, honestly, really scares me. I, um, I feel we, as counties, we need to take that on ourselves. We know what's best for our counties. We know what would work. And I don't want to leave that to DHS, and a lot of times, they don't look at, I feel, everything the way we look at, I'm just gonna put it that way, I don't want to...
And maybe to explain a little bit more is where we're at, is so next week on Thursday at one o'clock is the C I C S board meeting, and so it's actually an action, I have a discussion item for them to accept Saragordo and Webster. So in the event that they wouldn't agree to accept those, or they would table it, it would take a further timeframe within their still with C S S. Also, I received an email on Friday that our executive chair, Roy, is looking into he does have it on the I S E C legislative for next session, to talk about situations like this where counties that are no, you know, no fault to their own are being orphaned, and to ask them to be able to allow them to maintain that original region that they've already had it prior to your relationship, and not have to follow the contiguous rule. So that is also another piece that could possibly happen after January. And so then this, this thing, or what everybody's doing in this application, it's not like we're saying we're leaving yet.
Not being committed.
We're just being able to trade numbers and have conversations to make each of their boards comfortable. After that piece, and they would look at, then they would go in and decide probably at the end of their October board meeting, whether or not they would accept, and then it would come back to each governing board to do that resolution to C S S, is how it works.
Yeah, because getting back to it, says we are talking about approval of the letter of application.
Right, it's just an application, right. It isn't a stone.
Yeah, but we still do need to discuss, and this is all towards the approval letter.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Got another question for you.
Okay.
First, we're right next to the northwest Iowa Care Connection.
I...
You just don't want to get involved in that mess?
Right.
Okay.
I went to their governing meeting, trying to think when that, I think it was August, that one. And they're a very, very new region. They have a very new CEO who doesn't have a lot of experience. And very nice person. I know a lot of the people in those regions as far as CEOs. But I, I want to, I want to get us into something that's a little bit more stable and has the services already there. And they don't have a lot of services up in that area. I mean, if you look where they're at, they really don't have within their, you know, at least with Rolling Hills, we would have, you know, services within that region. Is that an accurate statement? They don't have any services in that region?
Well, they're just developing. They don't have a lot of their core, because they came from one region and another region.
Yeah, they're players.
They have five staff, so it's pretty small, and they're just, they're just kind of getting started with understanding all of that process, so.
Any other questions, thoughts on the approval of the letter of application?
So if we agreed for the letter of approval, and what happens if they say, no, you're not, then we have to go some other direction?
We would have to go another direction, which would be probably C I C S, if they will. And then, if they won't, then we are at the mercy of DHS.
Okay. So is the letter of application going to Rolling Hills then, for them to make the decision?
Yes.
And then, I mean, does anyone know how soon they would make the decision?
It would be on their agenda this next meeting, which is Wednesday.
Okay, so fairly soon then?
Fairly soon.
Okay.
I don't, I don't think they'd make that, that, until numbers are traded, at least, that's how C I C S...
Oh, okay.
Until October meeting, because if you think about, they had that meeting a month ago at C I C S, and then now they're on the agenda the following month.
Okay, I...
So normally, it probably wouldn't be till October, I would think, because there would want to be communication and conversations and things like that presented to you, but I think...
I thought they were, they were just accepting the application.
Yeah, accepting the application, but actually voting to join them.
Right, not voting, it's just accepting the application. It's the first step. We, we have to approve the application, they have to accept the application.
Okay.
And that'll be this Wednesday.
Well, basically, we're giving ourselves options.
This, this kind of explains that, if we prove that.
I'll make a motion to approve the letter of application to Rolling Hills.
I'll second. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved?
Thank you. And I will keep you informed as to everything that's going on. We have our month, our month leading in just Wednesday.
Thanks, Allison. Thank you very much for taking the time. Mr. Engineer, you have an issue with going early for change?
No.
Okay. Anyone else have an issue with that?
I'll get that back. Yep.
We could have Ben run through his agenda items.
Sure.
While he's here, Brighton.
The first item that I've got on is the policy that we've been working on here the last couple of weeks with regards to crossing our secondary roads. I did update some of the language. What we talked about was the county paying fifty percent of the cost of materials in the installation, up to two thousand dollars for open cutting a secondary gravel road, and fifty percent of the cost of materials in installation, up to fifteen thousand, to bore underneath the county highway. The number should be high enough. The only time that we've run into boring costs that have gone over the thirty thousand has been for a drainage project, where you're talking a larger tile. Anything that large, and you're gonna be dealing with Drainage District and Outback.
So Ben, I have a question. I have, I got a phone call this morning.
Sure.
Someone's asking or making sure that we're not adding any price, or any cost to over and above what the state law says we can, for which cost, or...
We're not adding, we're reducing.
I didn't, we're adding, yeah, we're not. That's what he wanted me to ask, was we're not putting anything over and above what the state law says the tile laws, they would do.
The tile laws say that Humboldt County is responsible for a hundred percent of the cost of the crossings, if the tile applicant provides, and then there's this laundry list of items that they have to provide, and those are mostly listed on page two and three of the tile crossing policy. But what we offer for the, for the applicants or for the farmers that are trying to do the tile line is more or less a quick and dirty, don't ask, don't tell version. Basically, you let us know what size tile you're trying to get from our side of the road to the other, and they have to provide a minimal amount of information, and the county will reimburse or subsidize a portion, a portion of the cost of that cross.
Rather than having the county come in and put the parcel across the road, slowing the project up and all that stuff.
Right, rather than slow it up, force these people to have a hearing, you know, which takes time and effort. I mean, Peggy would have to advertise, get it on the agenda, you know. Basically, this is a, it's a secondary means.
But if they didn't like our policy, we could still go through the hearing process?
Absolutely, yep. Absolutely, yep. Yeah.
It doesn't eliminate that.
It doesn't, no, you can eliminate the drainage law.
That's what we're trying to tell this gentleman.
Right. That's what I tried to explain to him, that we aren't putting anything over and above what the law say that we-
So with the one that we've been dealing with, with the Hefty and group up there, if they still want the full cost of the crossing, they can continue on the path that they've started. If they turn around after this and they say, you know what, if they're going to pay half the cost of the boring, maybe we just do it.
Right.
But I don't know how far they, you know, I mean, I know Legbold's been working on this for a while, trying to get all of this information. Maybe he's got most of it done already.
Yeah.
Well, when we talked, I asked him, or I said, basically what we're doing is trying to cut down the shortage for-
Right.
From our old-
Our old policy was basically four or five different sheets that we would have to pull together. It was our application to work in the right of way, which is standard for any utilities or anything. It was a copy of this four eighty-six, six hundred. It was signage agreement. I mean, there was four or five documents that we had to pull together where everything is basically included on this three-page document, and then a one-page application front and back that I don't have finalized.
And the other thing I asked you on Friday when we visited, they're still required if they're going to do their let cut, to make sure that they have the insurance and everything, that should be in order?
Yes.
For all of the, making sure that there's no fiber optics, or they have the ability to pay?
So a lot of that language is on this permit application?
It's a revised copy.
This is a revised copy, yeah.
Good.
So the permit application, that would be associated with this tile crossing policy, like you said, Bruce, it requires that they still call in their locates. I did add language in there after you and I had talked. It's on number, it's on number three. It says, the county shall be given the opportunity to inspect the crossing before being backfilled.
You're the one I was trying to remember what I asked you to do.
That gives us the option to, I mean, if it's contractor that we're used to working with and we know the type of work we do, you know, we can probably tell them, just go ahead and backfill. If it's somebody that we're not familiar with, or somebody that's new to the game-
Or some farmer who's doing it himself.
We would want to go out and inspect it before they backfill it, you know, especially since we're paying, you know, up to two thousand dollars for that crossing. If it's a boring, there's really nothing to inspect under the highway. But this requires that the person has a million dollar insurance policy. It spells out the dollar amounts that we pay out. There is the signage agreement that we used to have on a separate page towards the bottom. When you flip over to the backside of the application, it's the tile crossing agreement where the downstream property owner has to sign off on this, as well as location and information, and any additional notes that they want to put on or that we put on. But then everything's basically, everything will be on this two-page document for the information. And we can run through this line item by line item if you want.
What was the part about the downstream owner?
Downstream property owners on top of the back page. It's where they fill out the information, and there's a spot for the downstream property owner to sign off on it.
And what's nice is it's on here, so even if they're going from their own property, their own property-
They can sign both spots.
Yeah, so that it doesn't cause problems in their estate later on.
Right. Because what we've had in the past, was it two, three years ago, Mel Benz was tiling from his property to his property, and he basically just wrote on a piece of paper, I, Mel Benz, give myself permission to tile from the southwest corner of this section to the northeast corner of this section.
Kitty corner to cross.
Kitty corner crossing, yep.
I'll make a motion to approve and adopt Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty for a tile crossing policy for secondary roads.
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Good work, Ben. Thanks for cleaning that up.
Everything that in there that was supposed to be.
I believe so.
I'm assuming you have a twenty twenty resolution for Perry's fine?
Yes.
There's one of the twenties, is that twenty twenty?
Boy, you just hit that really right on the head.
Very much twenty.
Okay, looks like you got some voucher stuff here.
Yes, so the second item that I have on the agenda is to approve voucher number- Approve voucher number ten to Merriman Bridge Construction. This is the final voucher for the bridge project up on Virginia Avenue. It is the retainage associated with the jobs, eleven thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and two cents. Everything is done and completed, the DOT has been out, and they gave us their blessing. They're in the process of going through their materials audit on the project right now. We have all the information turned in to them.
I'll make a motion to pay vouchers, final voucher number ten to Merriman Bridge.
I got one question, is it seeded?
It is seeded.
Okay.
Yep. They came out and they put grass seed and a mulch combination together. I don't know how well it's taken. We might have to come back and put more seed down ourselves because we didn't get a whole lot of rain last month.
Okay. All right, I'll second. Okay, any further discussion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
The third item that I have on the agenda is to approve an application to work in the county right of way. This is for Midland Power Company. They are removing a power pole and switching to underground from the pole north of it to Scott Becker's bin site down on Hawaii Avenue in the corner of Two Seventieth. I don't know if you've been by there lately, Scott put a new bin up and some transfer stations, and he's looking at eliminating the overhead line that goes over one of his driveways into and out of that bin site.
It's a good idea.
I would make that motion to approve the right-of-way permit for Midland Power.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
The last item was one that I asked Peggy to amend the agenda to put on. So the build grant of, the build-
You all right?
Apparently.
The bridge got some strong property over here.
Yeah, it's strong stuff.
Might have to. The United States Department of Transportation allocated a billion dollars towards the reinvestment in our infrastructure. With that, and that is, United Stateswide, the most that a single state can apply for is twenty-five million. Iowa is going for the twenty-five million dollar grant, which is what they got back in twenty eighteen. They also called that the Bridge Bundling Grant, where they lump three or four bridges together to one contractor, and then they can sub it out to other contractors or keep it for themselves. But with that, they are in the process of applying for this twenty-five million dollar grant. It's my intention to try and submit an application for us to be Murray Bridge. It's a three million dollar bridge, roughly, to relocate the roadway to run straight north and south where the power line runs right now on Elm Avenue, be just east of Martin Brown's place. It would involve right-of-way purchase, moving utilities, historical and archaeological studies.
At the state with all that stuff.
And probably a four hundred foot long bridge. I'm estimating three million dollars based on the one that-
Webster did. I mean, hand cut.
That Hamilton County did.
It'd be very similar to what they did.
Yep. Just south of Webster City off of Seventeen, if you've driven by or seen that, that new road that they built there. That was two point seven million for that one. So that's kind of where I got my rough numbers.
There'll be a lot more dirt work on this one.
There will be, yep. But basically, what the one county engineer that I've talked to about it, he said, this is where you take your shot. If there's any bridges out there that you can't physically fund on your own, which would be this one, this is where you apply for this type of grant. It would have matching funds, similar to our old VR jobs, where the state would pay seventy-five or eighty percent, and the county would have to come up with the other twenty, twenty-five percent. We've got enough money in reserve and carryover that if we were awarded, we could come up with that six hundred thousand in local money. With that, there is a small risk of, you have to pay a private consultant to write the grant application, whether the state of Iowa is selected or not. So if, basically, we're submitting it to the Service Bureau. The Service Bureau takes all the applications and picks through them and decides which bridges they want to go after. And then, if you are part of that group of bridges, you would end up having to pay a portion of this consultant fee. I think last time they did it, they got twenty or twenty-five bridges included. So if you had one of those, you'd pay one twenty-fifth of-
Of the cost.
The cost. So they said last time, it was roughly a hundred thousand to write this application, so you figure four or five thousand is what your risk is to have them write the grant.
Well, nothing ventured, nothing gained.
That's kind of what I felt too.
Because if you pay that, and you know, your explanation is it may not go through, and you still ended up paying five thousand dollars, but if you don't agree to that, there's no way you're going to get the budget.
Right.
Kind of like buying a lottery ticket.
Right.
If you don't get in the lottery, you don't-
You can't win.
If you don't play, yeah.
People would have to drive a long ways with equipment when they farm on both sides of the river there. You'd make a lot of people-
Great thing if this all fell into place per your explanation.
I hope so. I mean, it's nine miles.
Yep.
Either way, I mean, that's the short route. It's nine miles. It's over twelve if you go the other direction. You're either looking at going through Bradgate or through Rutland, and then you're looking at being on the highway where, if this was replaced with-
It could be a farm-to-market route there.
I'd be looking at changing this to a farm-to-market route.
There you go.
Are we going to have to purchase some land?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Yep.
But it's not like high-priced farm to market.
No, no.
It's probably-
No, it's not the best in the county.
Really low river bottom, right?
But there would be, if they're going for easy ones for their round of applications, we'll fall off.
Yeah. They're looking at the quick and easy, this isn't a quick and easy.
Ours isn't a quick and easy.
But it does, there is a huge benefit to it.
Oh, to put this one in. Yep.
Have no idea if whoever looks at these things, do they look at benefit like Rick said, or they just look at quick and easy?
You know, I don't know. I don't know what their criteria is.
But if that's even part of their criteria, they would look at it.
Yeah.
Okay. So it does say, agenda-wise, that we discussed it, and we can approve the build grant application.
Well, I'd like your permission to be able to submit this on behalf-
I'll make a motion to allow you to submit the grant application.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go.
Thinking of people on the Murray Bridge that don't have to move all their fishing equipment.
Yeah.
Sometimes you make them kind of mad if you come up there.
Yeah.
They got poles all along there.
There's not much water running through there.
No, it's getting pretty low.
Yeah, it's pretty dry.
Yeah.
Did you have anything else? That was good stuff there.
PCI moved in this morning down on Gosh Park to start replacing that box cover.
Okay, good.
It should be, I mean, they started moving equipment in last week.
Okay. Shouldn't want to be shut down for a couple of days.
Wednesday, Thursday. I mean, I'm optimistic the end of the day Wednesday, otherwise Thursday we'll have the road open back up. There will be a gravel patch for roughly forty, forty-five feet. We will put up signs again.
That's a pretty shallow one too, isn't it?
Yeah. And I've talked to Alyssa as far as eventual overlaying it, and I said, let's just see how it beds in and settles in, and if it doesn't move much, maybe we'll look at the beginning of November, otherwise we'll just look at next year.
Good.
Aye.
And also, I want to make sure we keep the Rutland shop on the agenda sometimes, to where we're going and what we're going to do with that. They're interested in how we're going to proceed. I said, I just-
Yep. And that's fine. I mentioned something to Todd with Conservation, and there's a chance that they might be interested as well. I said, well, as that, your board probably needs to sit and have a conversation with our board then.
Yeah, because that's what I thought, if some county department needs it, why sell something and have to build something?
Right.
Yeah.
And like I said, if that's something that he's seriously interested in, they need to probably reach out to you guys. Because I do know they have additional mowers and cedars and everything that's-
They got a lot of equipment.
Well, like Bruce said, keep them on the stick, get them moving, so they don't just languish around there, and nobody knows what we're going to do with it.
Yep. I'll talk to Todd again.
Being as we're talking this, how much of this lot up here is block, is secondary roads, and how much is conservation?
All of it is secondary roads.
So they basically do-
We allow conservation to build the-
Use the building.
Build the building. In fact, secondary roads paid for one of those bays in Conservation's building, because that was our main shop before we bought the Harrison Building, and we stored, I think, our old spray truck in Conservation's Building back in the day, so we paid for one of the bays to be built.
I was just kind of curious, I didn't know if it was divided or is all secondary roads or what.
I believe it's all secondary roads.
So then technically, Murray Strucking could put one of their equipment in there over the winter? I mean, how are you-
If you halt for-
If you halt for secondary roads?
Well, I can put my truck inside on a cold morning, and a lot of these things, I can just get hurt. I'm just kidding.
So you have everything that you need?
Yes. Two of our guys started last week, and the third one will start a week from today.
Okay.
Good. Hope they work out.
So far, they've worked out really well.
Good, good, good. So, in the essence of time, let's drop down here and take a look at the- So, in the essence of time, uh, let's drop down here and take a look at the, uh, place on file auto's report for the Region Five has that material.
And that report is on the desk there? Yep.
I'll make a motion to place the auto report. The Region Five has that material, response, make him
Any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Polls? About to sign anything or just file it?
Nope, just file it.
Just file it. Okay, that will be filed. Uh, committee reports?
That we've paid down there for our care that go back to, uh, emergency management.
Goes to emergency management.
That's even approved at the
Yes, that.
Straight out.
Yeah, everything that I know
I know it was in the envelope while we was in transition
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanna make sure it got paid.
Yep, I think it is.
Good idea, Dave.
All right, committee reports, uh, Tuesday evening, I had a landfill meeting at Fort Dodge, but I chose to do the Zoom, which was a mistake.
Hmm.
You'd think after all this time Zoom meetings would run smooth, but they don't. You know, you couldn't hear half the time, microphones didn't work, they're passing a microphone around the room.
Hmm.
But the room isn't hardly big enough for everybody to show up, so. And then, um, there's really nothing, just basic business, nothing new down there. Uh, dog shelter Wednesday night out here at the shelter, uh, it's getting finalized, just some, few little caulkings, towel holders, things like that, pretty much everything else is done out there. They're discussing a security system, which I got involved in installing, so.
Are they going to have an open house at some point?
I think in November.
Okay.
They're talking.
Next
First part of November. Um, but yeah, it's, it's getting wrapped up. Now's up for me.
Oh, you had an LEC meeting too?
Oh, we did, didn't we? That was Tuesday morning.
Uh, the only thing I had was ministerial board meeting on Wednesday, the sixteenth, and I listened on the phone and, or actually on Zoom, I guess. And like you, it was at our church, and every time the air conditioning turned on and you couldn't hear the fans and, so it was a long hour and fifteen minutes and, but that was the only thing I had for the week.
Okay, Monday, the fourteenth, in the afternoon, um, I had, was over at Waterloo. We had our, um, special CSS meeting to approve the hiring of the new CEO. And, um, Mary, um, Kinley will be our new CEO starting October fifth. Um, so that went really well. Um, on the fifteenth, I was supposed to have a kitty cat Zoom meeting, but, um, I was on a call for mental health and that didn't get over until after one-thirty and, yeah. So I can't even begin to tell you how many calls I've been doing on the mental health, was talking to different people and trying to get, every day, it's been every day. Um, on the sixteenth, uh, Wednesday, I met with Dee and Kathy, um, at their offices to kinda go over and explain what happened with, um, Sir O'Gorrell passing the, um, their application for CICF. Um, we probably had about an hour and a half discussion on services and, um, uh, trying to let them, just keep them updated on what's going on with, within CSS itself. And I understand, I mean, there is an unsettling time for them and I, it's, everything's kinda in the envelope right now. Uh, then at, on Thursday, the seventeenth, I had a Rolling Hills, um, Zoom meeting with Don Demeter, um, their CEO, and then three other board members of theirs, just to kinda go over. They asked us questions as far as, um, why we were interested in them, what our, what our thoughts are, what our plans are, what do we wanna do moving forward. Um, and I pretty much told them that, you know, our first choice would've been, of course, to stay with CSS. I mean, that they've, they've always provided very good services. Um, we've just hired a new CEO, but that probably isn't gonna happen. So now we've gotta move for the future, and that's what I'm looking for, is I'm looking to the future to do the best that I can for, um, the people that need those services. And then, um, the eighteenth, I had an IWD statewide CEO webinar for the, um, 'cause we have to redo out of workforce too, so all of that is, so we've got that on our plate now too coming up, because that has to, um, everything has to be in place by December thirty-first. So, and Doug Bailey is retiring at the end of the year, and he's been our chairman for years, and he does an amazing job out of Hamilton. Um, so then, um, January, we'll have to have a new, new chair, and we're trying to get board members, uh, we have to get workforce development board members. So I need to try to find two business people within Humboldt County, um, so hopefully somebody will be able to be willing to step up and, um, be on that board. Um, uh, so, yeah, so I've had action past week. That's it.
Okay, uh, Wednesday, I started out, I was at the shelter for that meeting. I had to leave early for another meeting. But, uh, like Rick said, we're getting finalized out there. Um, Midas is donating the file cabinet if we want it. They donated a wooden desk for us. And all the donated stuff should be coming in. Washer dryer, refrigerator, all that stuff Computer, printers. Sprayers.
Looks nice on the outside.
Uh, the inside's pretty nice too. It's nice. Thanks to Mary and others that have donated it, uh. It's pretty, pretty nice. It's looking good. Uh, then Thursday night, we met up here with the zoning board, meeting zoning and board adjustment with Randy, and we've come to the conclusion that we need to update the ordinance for zoning and, uh, stuff like that, and we would like to try to go through Midas and have Shirley down there. Randy was gonna talk with her and we'll see if we can't update that Midas, but get it all compiled into one and scaled down and still have a great big book, a little. There's a lot of double talk and stuff like that. Clean it up, make it more simpler to read. It's been amended to, I don't know how many times, but the original goes way, way back, so that's where that's at.
I know you were talking about some maps too, finally getting
Yeah, trying to get some zoning maps that's clear, because the ones we have Yeah, they're pretty fuzzy. You don't know where the lines really are. And it's on our website, the maps are on there, but you get up close to the cities and you don't know what you got. You don't, and you turn it down, you can't roll it up enough and point it down.
Dave, are they still looking for a zoning board member?
Yes.
Still looking for zoning
Still looking for a zoning board member.
Board of adjustment has enough members right now?
Board of adjustment has right now, but
Still looking for a zoning board member, so I just wanted to mention that.
I don't think we have found a civil service board.
And civil, or civil service.
We don't
So keep that in mind and submit any applications.
Yep. That's all I had.
On, uh, Monday, the fourteenth, that morning, we had an LEC meeting, that was the one that I attended last week. So, well, we are, um, to our agenda item of just discussion on a resolution for the bond purchase agreement.
Let me get Mike on the phone. I'm just gonna do it by
[beep]
Oh, sorry.
I'd remind everybody that Harvest is slowly kicking up to a rapid pace and
We're sorry.
The one and only
Around corners and
You see flashing night, lights at night.
Yeah.
Slow down, it's probably a big machine.
Just like every other year, they're all anxious to get
Sounds like the bean and the corn bolt coming
Early dry air.
I'm surprised at how much, how much beans are you out in the corner.
Like Bruce said, it's gonna really ramp up quick here over the next week, ten days.
Mike, good morning.
Good morning, Mike. This is Peggy from Humboldt County.
Hey, how's it going?
Going good. I am here with the board.
Hi.
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can, I can. Hey, um, I, uh, I will keep it short and sweet for you guys today. Um, just wanted to let you know that Peggy and I worked through a couple diligence items for the attorney's late last week. Instead of rushing things for this morning's meeting, we are, um, uh, going to just pause and we'll come back and finalize all the action plan for today, a week from today. Uh, no issues there, just wanted to make sure we had an appropriate time to finish everything, but, uh, we're currently rolling and, uh, in good shape. I just wanted to let you know we took a little bit extra time to get through some of those diligence items for the attorney.
I would do that and
Yeah, Mike, does this, uh, slow down our timeline particularly for everything else that we've talked about previously?
No, just the, just the twenty-eighth, so, um, we'll, we'll hit that date and go from there.
Okay.
No, if you need to table, we'll just continue action the next week, okay?
That's fine.
All right.
Yeah.
Just basically information for us and
Yep, but we'll look forward to visiting with you, uh, next week then.
All right, thank you much.
Thank, thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Well, there you have that. Any other thought processes on that? Looks like it's next week. Anything else in the, uh, for the good of the cause of the county?
I have a question on, in regard to that with, like, the conservation, the, the money that they've requested, are, are, will there be agreements set up as to how that comes back or how do we do that? I, I don't know anything about it, so I thought I'd ask. Between them and, and I know that we talked about the fire stuff was going to be basically is theirs. Um, is the police with Dean, is that all for, is it deputies, or is part of that go to the Humboldt Police Department or how?
The portion that was going to Humboldt Police Department, the city of Humboldt, we reimburse
That's what I'm
Basically a ten-year payment plan on a twenty-eight-year agreement. And I do believe we should have a twenty-eight-year agreement with the county conservation board stating that this money is for the dam and what isn't used for the dam will be refunded back to the pay the
That's where I'd like to go.
Yep.
I agree. Well, someone would need to visit with the county attorney and have him draw those up for you.
Okay. I just saw him
Walk by.
Towards the, the building, so I know he's upstairs.
Not looking one way or the other.
No. That would be good.
We'd need a twenty-eight-year agreement with the conservation board stating that?
If you were wanting them to repay back, I think
I, I wish I could, 'cause I think that was part of the agreement that when people in Humboldt are voting to, or actually not voting, but that was what we're saying it's for, and then they go and spend it on something else, they're gonna have a lot of unhappy taxpayers. If they don't think it was
One thing.
Yes.
And in the same way with the
If they're giving the money to the fire department for radios and they go out and buy a new truck with it.
Right.
Right.
And the other one was with the city
City, that probably
If it's police
Yeah.
They would be
That portion of Dean's allotment would be
They'd pay
Twenty-eight back
Right. On the city side. On the city side, yeah.
But the only question I had
Definitely get that in place. I'd say sooner than later.
Yeah.
As we're moving forward pretty quickly with this bonding.
Do you wanna talk to the county attorney about that?
I can.
I haven't had real good luck talking with him lately.
I will.
Okay.
You have anything, Peggy?
I do. Um, I checked with Linda Flanders on helping out with the Iowa Cares Grant. Um, she said she's pretty much in retirement. Um, she could do some very basic things for us, but I think I can handle the basic things on my own. It was the tougher stuff I was needing help with, so it looks like I'm gonna be doing it anyway.
Did you get Anybody else?
Did you recommend anybody else?
I guess I didn't ask for that. She, her last email, she said, "If you are okay with me doing just this and this, let me know," and I thought, "I'm gonna be doing it anyway." Yeah. My question comes in, uh, "We're not getting a huge amount of money on the Cares Grant, it's like a hundred and twenty-five thousand." I mean, every, everything is nice to have, but how do we determine county-wide who gets that money? You know, I've run through my head, do I need to have a meeting of all the department heads and everybody gives me their wish list like we did with you guys? And before you know it, we've got more than a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Or is there any one big thing? You know, I've gotten a lot of election equipment, but it's all covered under the election grant.
Yeah.
Um, everything that I purchased, the, the letter opener and the folder and the new machine to come in here is all gonna be covered by the election grant. So this money, I mean, I know the recorder wants to get some stuff, but I haven't opened it up to anybody else. Ben may have something, the sheriff may have something, Conservation may have something. I mean, this was, this is a county-wide thing, not just a courthouse thing. And a hundred and twenty-five thousand is not gonna go very far.
No.
But, you know, maybe there are some people that don't have anything that don't, like me, I mean, it's covered somewhere else.
Right. I think we probably should ask.
Yeah, I think we should. And just give them a deadline and say, "Let me know by this date if you are interested and we'll have to prioritize whatever you're interested in." I'd like to try to get that done this week and have the recommendations back to you guys by Monday so that you can kinda help me decide which ones go forward and which ones don't.
Okay.
Good idea.
Yeah. All right, and I'd ask Linda if she would recommend somebody that she knows ordering that writing to help you out, 'cause you got a heavy load this
We do. We've been very busy with election stuff, so.
Are you getting a lot of absentee ballots in and everything now?
Yeah, we're up to about eleven now.
Oh, goodness.
For us, that's, yeah.
That's a lot.
Usually we have about fifteen hundred in a general, so we'll be way over that.
You've got that already. When is the deadline? I forgot the date. What's the deadline for the, um, to be in for the absentee?
As long as they get it to us the day before, or the Friday before, that's the last day we can mail out an absentee ballot. But it's the
Time of getting back
The mailing back time, or if they can drop it. Our drop box has been approved as far as being an election drop box. What I'm gonna have to do is take away the key from the treasurer's office
So you
And the one from the custodian, because during that time period, when October fifth, the ballot goes out until the night of election, only our office can have access to that box. We have to have a, a log that we fill in, who went to pick it up, what time they picked it up, what did they pull out of there when they did, um, you know, very detailed instructions on how we're supposed to, we're getting a camera installed. I had Cody come down from Electronic Specialties. He's supposed to be giving me a quote, but it'll focus just on
The drop box.
The drop box, so that, and it'll continually record it, so that if anything happens, anybody tries to tamper with it, we're able to go back and see the footage.
What's the motion when it just comes?
Continually, it has a I think that's what he told me, it would be continual, but I don't know, maybe it'll be motion activated too, I'm not sure which direction he's gonna go.
So it could be a way of keeping the data from that? I mean, is it gonna be on a server, you know, the, how does that work?
That's a Cody thing. Hopefully, when he comes back with a quote, we'll, we'll ask him some more questions, you know? Hopefully, when he comes back with a quote, we will ask him some more questions, you know, like ours is now for Algonquin Park in Lot and that it's not, it isn't kept forever, it's kept for a little bit and then it's gone. But this one will have to be kept.
Right.
At least till past the election and any.
So there's an argument that could be.
That could be a while. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to go real smooth.
Yeah.
No, it's going to go real smooth in Humboldt County, though.
Yes.
It will, it will.
We are reasonable people.
That's right. That's all we have control or jurisdiction over. It's going to go very smoothly in Humboldt County, and the rest of the country can have their fracas, which Bruce just mentioned. It'll drag on the balance of the year, but we can only do what we can do, so keep up the good work.
Yep, and people can still put other things in the box, it just.
You will have to be.
Can't be opened by somebody else.
You will have to be in charge of boiling out.
Yeah, we'll make sure that everybody gets what they're supposed to. We've done that for years.
I think several people comment about having that ability to just pull up something.
They like.
They like a lot.
That's been a very good thing.
Especially somebody who has trouble with stairs and all that, just drive by and.
Yep, so. Unless they don't want something nice.
Well, that's just a good idea. And they have a little mailbox made of bottom steps for property taxes, so that's made that convenient, too, for folks. Is there anything else? Is there anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.